Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you, and that's the first thing that I will say. Thank all of you for coming. And with the weather, and I think one of the things about weather and weather reports is that they try to scare you. I think they try to scare you to stay home. And it's really not that bad, but it is cold. It is cold, and hopefully we can get through this and get out of here at a decent time, so that your home's safe and sound. But again, I appreciate having all of you here tonight. So we're gonna jump right into this and get started. First thing I've got to make this thing to take care of, and what I mean by that is that I want to thank the people that brought refreshments. And those are people, that was Tim Cusick that brought refreshments, my wife, I want to thank her for helping. And I also want to thank the sign-up table in the back, and please make sure you update your information, so that we can actually use that to contact you about further meetings. And I want to thank Linda Jones. I also want to thank Lucille Harris. And also, and also one other person that brought refreshments, and that's Councilman Rod Jennings. So I just want to thank those people up front. And, oh, right there, okay, sorry. Get away. And again, just making sure that we get that out of the way and thank those people. Next thing that I want to do is, and I'm looking to make sure I've got everybody that I can, I'm gonna recognize people. I want everybody to recognize that we have our police chief here tonight, and we have Captain Lemon here tonight, and I'm gonna recognize him being here. Okay, so there are, there are people that I'm looking for that I don't see, so we'll move forward with the event tonight. Primarily, what I want to do is give you an overview. There are a lot of information, there are a lot of things that are happening. MSD is happening. There are other things that are happening in the city council that we haven't expressed to the, and explained, and given that information to the public. And that's why I think this is important. I also think it's important to welcome our new city manager, and that's primarily why I've invited all of you here tonight, to meet the new city manager, and then also meet the candidates that are running for the upcoming election, and that includes school board candidates. And one of the people that I wanted to recognize just walked in, and that is our school superintendent, Miss, Mrs. Veronica Martin Barclay. And husband and daughter, I just want to make sure I introduce them, and they're here tonight. Thank you. Okay, so let's jump right into this. First thing that we're gonna do, and that, and we're gonna do this, and again, this is a nice pleasant event, so just keep, just be happy, feel good. And the first thing that I want to do is, I want to introduce all of the school board candidates, and I want all of them to come up front, those that are here. And we'll go through the list of people, but I'd like all of the school board candidates to come up and stand in front, and so that you can recognize who they are. And I'll go down the list. Right now, I'd like Joanne Suda to come up. Christine Hendricks let me know that she couldn't make it, she's out of town. I don't know if there's a representative with her material, but she couldn't make it. And then is Matt Bellows here. Okay? And Romeo Sumter, I think I said that right? And last but not least, Patricia Washington, and I'd like her to come up. And everybody give them a round of applause. Okay, and understanding that we all vote for school board officials. We all vote for the candidates, and there are two positions that are open, and again, there are five people running, and I just wanted to make sure you saw those candidates, and saw as many as that would show up tonight. And again, I thank you ladies for being here, and I wanted to get this out of the way, and thank you. Joanne made a special trip here, and she canceled her appointment because it's her husband's birthday today. And one of the things that I want to do, to keep this a nice pleasant event, and thank them for changing their arrangements. And everybody, meet Joanne's husband, and he would stand up where he stands. And let's do this, thank you, again, we're gonna keep it pleasant, let's get this. Everybody, let's wish him a happy birthday. Ready, go!
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. All right, thank you.
And now they go have a pleasant dinner. Thank you all. Now, for the city council, I'd like all the candidates for city council to come up front, and also for the mayoral position also. And I'd like Terry Crowe to come up, I'd like Steve McMahon to come up, and Stacy Clay, Tim Cusick, and also Gerald Tears, Gerald Tears, Tears. And I'll do that when they get up here. So, here they are. So we have Steve McMahon, who's running in the first ward. We have Stacy Clay, who's running in the third ward. We have Tim Cusick, running in the second ward. And we have Gerald Tears, running in the second ward also. Give them a round of applause. Now, it's very important in your ward, and again, this is another reason why I'm holding this event. Not only do I want you to talk to the school board candidates, but I also want you to talk to the city council candidates. And the last most important position is Terry Crowe, running for the mayoral position. So, that's Terry Crowe. And again, understand, please, spend some time, and we're gonna leave time for you to talk to the candidates, get to know them, you know, state your complaints, state your pleasantries, and obligate him to do great things on the third ward, Dr. Skip. Thank you all, thank you. Okay, one more thing before we get to the city manager. You know, we had a recent incident that happened on mayor. And what I wanted to do is, because that was so recent to this event, is that I wanted our police chief to come up and give us an update, or give us whatever information he could about that. So that, you know, if there were any questions, you know, and again, if you have questions, be brief, but I just wanted to have him come and give us an update on something that just recently happened. And I'll let him come up. And we have Chief Hampton and Captain Lemon.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. How are we doing today? Yes, we did have a tragic event on January 31st, 6:47, in University City, 1200 Block and Meyer. We received a call for a shooting. When officers arrived on the scene, they discovered two victims, two gunshot victims, one male, one female. Both were suffering from critical injuries. Both were transported to the hospital, where the male has the comatose injuries. What I can't speak about that, but the victim has been identified as Allen Young, 27 years of age, of University City. Has a sister, resides in University City, actually came up through to high school here in University City as well. Both victims were sitting inside of the vehicle when the perpetrators began to fire upon the vehicle. They pretty much walked onto the vehicle, walked up to the vehicle and started firing. One was struck multiple times, has the comatose injuries. The female victim was struck at least once, and is currently still in critical condition in and out of state at the hospital. If you, let me first state this, if you have any information, we need your help. We need the community's help. Right now, we're facing a dilemma as far as certain individuals or residents in the area kind of refusing to cooperate with surveillance cameras. That's kind of unheard of, I know, especially in an incident like this, but we need that help. We need that type of surveillance help. We can't state that, what I can state about this right now is that we know that the victims were probably followed from outside of University City. This is not a random event, and I can tell you that because of the investigation thus forth. The detectives, the investigators have worked throughout the weekend, I mean Saturday, Sunday, doesn't make a difference, they're still here now, they're out working. We've interviewed several people, interviewed several references as far as why this MO is not random. That's how we can be certain that this is not just a, running a deal, pick it up, I'm just gonna shoot somebody. That's not that case. Feel very tragic for the family, for the victim, they're still here now with the hospital. We haven't been in touch with her, like you say, she is still getting out of the hospital as far as her condition. Couple of motives been brought forth, but we're tracking leads on all of those. We're not just looking at one particular situation or one particular reason. We want to track and investigate all reasons to the best of our ability. And with that being said, I'll turn it back over, unless we have some questions that we might have on that. Anyone with, if anyone with information, first of all, you can remain anonymous. You do not have to be identified about anything particular dealing with this case. That's something that, that's something that a lot of people get misunderstood, misassumed, that just because I'm giving information, I have to be identified. That's not the case. What is the case is, we like to be, we like to make sure that we're always on the right track, that we're always investigating the right leads, that we're always talking to the right people, and not racing that time, because we want to get killer off the shoot. Malicious killer off the shoot. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, now for the main event. The person that I'd like to introduce is the new city manager, his name is Gregory Rose. And again, the council went through a process, and we did exactly what we stated we were gonna do. We had, and believe it or not, we had 52 candidates from all over this country that applied for this position. We had, we had candidates from Canada that actually applied for this position. And out of the 52, we dwindled that down to about 12. We went through the process and read through everything and chose four, and out of that four, we chose two. And from that two, then we had one. And that one was the best candidate, and was across the board with all the council members and mayor, was the choice of everyone, was unanimously the choice. And that choice is, again, Gregory Rose, and I'm gonna introduce Gregory Rose. And allow him to speak about some issues and concerns that we had talked about, but I also wanted to you to hear from him. And again, I'll introduce Mr. Gregory Rose. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let me start out by thanking both Councilmember Smothersen and Jennings. So we're appreciative for you hosting this for us, this community event. Yeah, I was a resident of University City, and so from 1997 to 2001, I lived right off of COVID. And so for me, it's sort of like homecoming, because our daughter was born here. She, we left when she was three. And so recently, she had the opportunity to come back to visit. And she continued to say, she's still at the University of Arizona, but she said she couldn't understand why this felt so much like home for her. And I said, well, you may only look to Born and Stuich Hospital, and you'll know why. But it's been a wonderful experience, it was great being here. University City is just an outstanding community. And so for the mayor and for the council members, I have been blessed to be able to return, and I am certainly forever grateful. I want to talk about a few things. One is what's happening with MSD and that project. The second one, I'll talk a little bit about, which is the property at Olive, Indoor and South. And then thirdly, which I'm gonna go off record a bit, I'll talk a little bit about my vision for public safety. And as you heard Police Chief Hampton say, you know, don't misunderstand, crime happens in most communities, and I think that our, by far, police officers are outstanding. But we can always improve, and so that's what, that's what I've been looking to do. With regards to the MSD project, they have identified, I think they provided about 14 different options to consider. They had a number of public meetings. The way this project got started, it actually started back in 2007. There was a lawsuit that was filed by EPA, federal EPA, and by the state. And so as a result of that lawsuit, in 2012, they developed this consent decree, and that's what MSD is basing their decisions off of. And the whole lawsuit centered on the, during moderate and heavy rains, both stormwater and sewer water would end up merging. And for the environmentalists, and for all of us, that's just not a good situation. So what the federal government has said is, MSD, you gotta fix that, you gotta do a better job. And they said that over the course of the next 23 years, MSD is expected to fund about $4.7 billion in repairing that situation. Certainly one of the major areas of concern is University City. So they presented 14 options, some of them better than others. What they ultimately recommended is option, Section C, Option 6, which is the commercial area that is near Olive Street, just south of Olive Street and 82nd Street. You know, I have a good, and I think University City has had a good working relationship with MSD. But the council members and mayor, and my responsibility is to provide you with the best solution possible, with the least impact possible. And so we're, I'm hopeful that our goals align with MSD. The mayor and council have approved recently funding to bring on board engineers, so that we can better evaluate those options that have been presented. Are they the only options that exist out there? Possibly. But I want someone that's independent from MSD telling me that. And the mayor and council agree with that. So we have a postaboard that is right outside that identifies the section where they're looking to bury the tanks. I also learned even within the option that they're recommending, that there are several variations, so the tanks, even though they have identified them on a piece of paper as far as where they will be located, there are several ways of locating those tanks even on that spot. But we've got to first determine, is that the best option for University City for that area? So I don't know if we'll take questions, but we're happy to take questions after this. I'll certainly be sticking around for a while. One of the other projects I want to talk briefly about is the land at Olive in Northern South. And some of you may realize that we are currently in litigation over that property. So that means I can't say a lot, you know about it, so forgive me. But I did come up with this analogy, which I think gives you a good sense of some of the challenges that we're experiencing. So assume for, if you will, that you have a car. And this individual says, you know, I like your car, I'd like to have it. And you said, well, that's okay, but you've got to take my sister to work every day. So you give the person the car, and then they come back to you and say, well, you know, I can't take your sister to work every day. So what would you say? Give me my car back. That's exactly, that's similar to what we're experiencing. We believe at the time that we had a deal, for whatever reason, that deal did not happen. And so we're in the situation where we believe that we were the right owners of that property. And we'll see what, what happens with that. Now, that's all I can say about it, because I know they're all really looking at me, making sure I don't say too much. The third thing I want to talk about is something that's near and dear to my heart. And there are two areas that you will see me focus quite heavily on. One is public safety, and the other is economic development. And actually, without the first, the second doesn't happen. So I reveal during another public meeting that we are looking to slightly modify our strategy for public safety. And some of this, you know, I'm still working with the mayor and council on, so these are things that I can say I will be recommending, but I will need to work with them to justify why I'm making those recommendations. One is, I want to use our facilities to better stabilize neighborhoods. Currently, our strategy is the consolidation of all of our police in one facility. My strategy is a little different, in the sense that we locate police stations throughout the entire city. Now, why is that? We want to have a greater presence in the community. And one way of doing that is to ensure that we have facilities out there in multiple areas of the community that our police are deploying from. So we want to use our facilities better to fight crime, but not just fight crime, but also fighting the fear of crime, which is just as important. And I'm always asked where we locate those facilities. And I tell people, find me the most challenged area, find me a park in that area, and that is what I'll be recommending, that we locate in the parks. And the reason for that? Because we want to make sure it's that community using the park, not the bad people. That's what you pay your taxes for. The other area that we're gonna focus on is technology. So better using, being smarter than the criminal is today. Using technology instead of hiring tons and tons of people. One of the pieces of technology that we will be presenting to the mayor and council next week is the use of unmanned aerial vehicles. Who knows what those are? Drones, exactly. The use of drones has been proven to be successful throughout the country. And so the introduction of this technology for University City is something that's already been tried, not just in police, and in the suppression of civil unrest, identifying the bad guys, making sure that we don't place our employees, our officers, our code enforcement employees in harm's way when they're doing these joint exercises. So also, for search and rescue for our fire, there are so many applications. We will be presenting that information to the mayor and council on Monday of next week to start introducing this idea of better using technology. But it won't stop there. We'll also talk with them about the use of cameras. Cameras and vehicles will be our first step, and then secondly, body worn cameras will be our next. So, use of facilities, the use of technology. The third leg of this is engaging the public into our policing process. Police cannot do it all. Without the public being involved, whether it's through volunteering, through such things as a volunteer patrol, whether it's through helping our police officers, because we will never staff them the way that they need to be staffed, for causing all of the funding that's involved in it. But through volunteering, through creating a program that allows you to provide your assistance, we can be more effective. Through crime watch programs, if some of you already have, to really engage those through greater participation in the neighborhood associations. You'll see us coming out into the community, we won't be asking you to come to us. So technology, engaging the community through the use of facilities, those are just some of the ways that we will be changing our approach into policing. We all agree on at least one thing, crime is bad. Crime should not occur. And those children that are in those areas where crime is occurring, they can do better, I think. And so I told Police Chief Hampton, I'm a runner, you know, I like to get, I run. And if I can't run in any area, then imagine individuals that have to live here. There is very little daylight on how Chief Hampton and I see policing into the future. We got to work with the mayor and council, we have to work with the community, but we all can get there. My goal is for University City to be the safest community in Missouri. Economic development. Olive Boulevard gives us our best chance of diversifying our economy, bringing jobs in, and bringing more opportunities. Why do people often commit crime? Because they do not make enough money in their mind to sustain themselves, so they go to a very different direction. And I will tell you, you know, I'm from a very diverse family, so I have a deep understanding of how people make decisions to do things that we see as being very bad, a very bad decision. But someone trying to feed their family, sometimes that's a tough one. Now, don't misunderstand, I'm never promoting or suggesting people should commit crime. Any reporters in here? Okay, I want to make sure you get that right. But what I do say is that we have to at least understand the condition, and only through understanding can you change it. So economic development is an important aspect of being able to change the environment that people are in. And I believe that Olive Street gives us our best opportunity. I've had an opportunity to talk with Councilmember Smothersen in particular, but with all of the council members, and they all agree and accept that we can be better on Olive Street. Olive Boulevard is a major corridor. I think that what you will see in the future happening there, we have to partner with the state, we have to partner with the federal government if we're going to make changes that are significant in this decade. But Olive Street is not the only place that we'll focus. Should we look more at Del Mar and I-170? Why doesn't University City have a hotel? I know, that's the same thing I thought. So all of those things, we'll take a very close look at. Public safety, economic development, coupled with that transportation corridors, and that's really what Olive Street is. So I'm gonna hold up right there, I appreciate having the opportunity to come out. I don't know if we'll take questions now, or we'll do that, so I'll turn things back over. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rose. And one other thing I wanted to add to what he mentioned, and that is development on Olive, and I wanted to let everybody know the lot on Olive and Midland. And let me say this first, this council is not sitting around doing nothing. I just want to make sure you understand that. This council is moving things forward. And one of the things that we are doing is, we're developing Olive at 170, and Mr. Rose is now a part of that. And that plan, and that's moving forward, and there's going to be an official announcement sometime about that, I would say this year. But again, what I want to say is, the bright that U-City is looking very good in the future, meaning, and I'm saying this year, you're gonna see some things happening in University City. And one of the other things I want to mention is Olive and Midland. We just did an RFP on Olive and Midland, that RFP closed on the first, and we did get one request or one reply back. And it hasn't been presented to the council yet, but what I will promise you is that something is gonna happen at Olive and Midland, or those sculptures and that house is coming down. I promise you, something's gonna happen, or those sculptures and that house is coming down. So that's a promise, you can write that down. So that's a promise, you can write that, make a note. So, so that's where we stand at Olive. The other thing I want to also mention is that Nathaniel Hawthorne, that is under contract. Now, it hasn't been completed yet because we've got some financing that we've got to work out with, with the development company. And that development company is called Screaming Eagle Development, I believe they are. And, uh, we're working out the, the, the money issues and the, the funding for that. Once that's done, my understanding is that they're ready to go as soon as that is done. And understand this, the project at Nathaniel Hawthorne is market rate apartments, and they're going to build, be building, um, separate, about ten to twelve separate units on the north side of the school, and I think thirty-seven units in the school itself. So, so that's coming this year. So again, as I said, that, I, I think that the future for U-City is bright, and we have a council that is actually moving things forward. Now we've got a city manager who's joining us in that pursuit to move things forward. So let me take care of some maintenance things, and again, what I mean by that is this, MSD, I'm going to go back to MSD. I want to first of all thank all of you that joined in, filled out feedback forms, because MSD decided they're going to go on that Mandarin, uh, that commercial lot right there on Olive where Mandarin House sits. Now, I think the only reason that happened is because you got involved, we got involved, and, and let them know that we didn't like the first option that was presented to us. And, and understand this, this is where we came from. We came from MSD coming in and telling us they were going to take forty to sixty houses on May twenty-second, and we didn't have any option other than choosing A or B, that was all we had, and they said that there were no other options. Well, we didn't agree with that, and I think the resistance that we, we applied, and we responded, we showed up at meetings, and then this is the thing that I want to make sure you, you all understand, that there were some background things happening. So the first thing that I want to do is I want to have Hazel Irving stand up, and she's our county councilwoman. And again, there's some background things. Again, out front, you all responded, the council addressed them, but things that you don't, that you don't see in the background, and that is that Hazel Irving put me in contact with one of the trustees on MSD's board, and that's Michael Yates. And Michael Yates stayed in touch with Hazel Irving, Hazel Irving stayed in touch with me, and kept me updated about what was happening on MSD Board and what they were doing in the background. And he was very supportive of our position, and that is that we did not want any residential houses taken, and that's where we are right now. And so again, I want to recognize her effort and her support in that involvement. So again, give Hazel Irving a big round of applause. The next recognition, and I'd like Brian Williams to stand up, if he would, please. And this is Brian Williams. Brian Williams is represents, uh, Congressman Clay, and he works in Congressman Clay's office here in St. Louis. And so what I want to let you know is that, now, so, so again, understand, we've got county that was involved, we had state, we had, uh, uh, Joe Adams was involved, but we also had the federal government involved, we had our representative, uh, for the federal government, and that is Congressman Clay. And what I want to explain is this, Brian Williams stayed in touch with me, I gave him and made sure he was updated on everything that was happening with MSD, and he responded back, but not just that, and I, you know, you think, well, well, you think, well, what does Congressman Clay really know? You know, and Brian is sending me replies back, does he really know? I'll tell you this, I attended, uh, University City, um, Hall of Fame banquet, and, uh, Congressman Clay was there, and he casually walked up to me and we shook hands, but what he said to me confirmed that he knows what's happening here, was very supportive of our position, so he absolutely was getting that information that I was giving Brian. And again, I want to give Brian Williams and Congressman Clay a big round of applause. But I will also say to Hazel Irving and Brian Williams, who will then express this to Congressman Clay, we've got Olive Development, and you heard our city manager say it, we need county help, we're going to need state help, we're going to need federal help. So they are aware, they're sitting right here, right now, so just make sure you understand that. So again, before I close out, one of the things I also wanted to do is I thank Councilman Rod Jennings for sponsoring this meeting with me, and just wanted to give him a chance, if you had anything to say and you could come up? Okay, thank you, sir. And again, thank Rod Jennings for sponsoring this with me. So what I want to also now, this is the primary part of this, if you have any questions, if you want to talk to any elected official that's still here, and, um, and it's good to see Sonya Poyner, and Sonya, did you want to say something real quick?
I do.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Hello, everybody. I live in Third Ward, and I actually read the letter to City Council, I have some concerns. So, uh, the first thing that I read was about code enforcement, and possibly considering it as an opportunity to, to.
Come on, they can't hear you, I'm sorry, come on.
Okay. So, um, the first question I have is actually for the city manager, for city council to want to speak, but it's about code enforcement. So, um, I read that you're looking into a program about possibly linking code enforcement, random interior inspections, and possible criminal activity. I want to know more about that program because, um, I don't think I want people randomly coming into my house, so that's a concern, privacy is a concern. I'm concerned about crime, but people also deserve to be protected as well, their rights. So I have a question about that, and I would like, uh, better explanation about that. Okay. Um, the other thing is, I agree with you, uh, Gregory Rose, that economic opportunities, they're all correlated with crime. So if people have real opportunities, they usually, you know, probably won't commit crime, certain types of crime. When I hear things like tax increment financing, such as, um, the city is hoping to do or proposing to do in the Third Ward, I get a little concerned, because anytime there's economic development or this idea of tax refinance, redevelopment, there's also displacement tied to that. So I have questions about that as well. People who live in those, in, in Third Wards, such as myself, um, you won't have a real opportunity if you're displaced from the area, so I would like for that to be addressed. If you look at the history of redevelopment, you know that people are displaced constantly. Anytime this money starts funneling in, anytime the neighborhood starts looking a little different, I have real concerns about that. So how will you protect the residents that are already here? I think that, uh, the city council's job and the city manager's job is for the best interests of the residents of University City, and, um, if other people who want to live here can benefit from that, then that's an addition, but you should first, first, excuse me, start planning for the people that live here. So I have some real concerns about that, I think that if we're going to go that route, that there needs to be some real protections in place to make sure that lower income people aren't gentrified to other communities. Thank you. And that's pretty much all I have right now, so.
But I can now do a rest and let Sonya know that she can talk to the city manager afterwards, but one of the things I'll briefly say, and, and because it's not, it's not officially, um, presented and it's not, hasn't been established, the development on Olive and 170, um, is, is, if once that becomes official, then we can actually go into the protections that we are actually going to institute. And then what I will say is that we're not looking to, to, to remove people or move people, we're actually looking to stabilize the neighborhoods in the Third Ward, that's what we're actually doing. So again, that's not, that's our concern also, is not displacement. So what I wanted to say finally is, and again, let you know, please talk to the elected officials, the, I'm sorry, the candidates that are here tonight, please take their material, please make sure you talk to, and, and welcome our city manager, uh, you have Police Chief and Captain Lemmons here, so again, I'm going to co-close this meeting, and again, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. Make sure that you see the table in the back, if you have information that we need to update, please do that. I want to recognize Reverend E.G. Shields is here, and, uh, and if you would, say it, please, sir, just say it briefly, and, and appreciate you being here. As my wife said, please make sure you grab some refreshments and take cookies and take cupcakes, and, and, and I think they're dog friendly, no, I'm just kidding, but anyway. No, no, but anyway, again, thank you all, be safe going home, leaving tonight, so please make sure you're safe. Thank you all for coming, please stay around and talk to our candidates, thank you. That closes the meeting.